Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session today's Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Appreciate those that are in attendance here with us as well as those that are with us online. We'll get straight into our unfinished business. First up, we have presentation of franchise agreement with Community Television Company, a subsidiary of LJ Telephone Company, provide cable services to Dawson County. This originally appeared on the September 2nd, 2021 work session agenda. County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in your agenda packet, a copy of the agreement that we put together and circulated with the proposed franchisee. We've sort of finalized that and we have a signed agreement back from them. And that is what you have before you. If you have any questions, we're prepared to answer them.
Questions for the county attorney? All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to the new business. First up, we have presentation of ambulance purchase request versus Service Director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Kind of a, we find ourselves stuck in a little different scenario as we try to look to the future and purchase equipment. So part of our funds that are allotted in the current SPOSS is for the purchase of med units. What is before the board is a request to purchase two additional med units with the equipment on them. We'll be using the same vendor, Ten Eight Fire, and purchasing through the Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchase Agreement. Same agreement that we did for last year's purchase. Well, the tricky part of this whole purchase is that we're requesting the PO to be issued so we can go ahead and get these on the books. Because once we issue the PO, they're talking 24 to 30 months before those med units arrive here. So it's, and I think the chairman can allude, you know, typically I come to the board and say, hey, we're ready to buy an ambulance. Yes, go ahead Chief Thompson. And nine months later, med unit rolls in and it's just not the case. The ones that the board graciously approved last year, I got notification on Monday that we should see them. They just got the chassis for those this week. And hopefully those units will be here in June. But with that, my rolling fleet's racking up some mileage. But again, the total cost for two trucks and all the equipment is 883-262. And we would just ask that we be able to move forward with issuing the PO with the understanding that these units will likely not be here until 2024, maybe even 25. I'll answer any questions that the board may have. There's really no changes on this, except for the cost unfortunately did go up.
Questions for Chief Thompson?
Do you have any problem? I know you said there's a lot of maintenance costs. Do you have any problem getting parts and?
So. I don't want to rain on Shannon's parade, but I'm pretty sure if we brought Shannon in here right now, he has issues. Getting part, just simple batteries. He's had to stock up on batteries just for some of the sheriff's office vehicles, for some of the regular, you know, dodge around pickup trucks that, you know, parks and buildings and our agency uses as well. So unfortunately, I would like to tell you the answer to that was no, but the reality of it is yes. Very much we continue to see, and I hate saying it, shipping issues. But it is, it is something that we're having to deal with. So I wanted to go ahead and try to get this PO issued, get it on the books and, you know, try to move forward because by the time 24 months rolls around, I'm looking at the current five med units. If we take the two that we're getting in June, most all of these will be over 170,000.
And then when they break down so hard to get parts and, you know.
And that's a discussion that Shannon and I actually had is that when the two new ones come in in June, we're actually not going to surplus anything, which is in the past, the chairman can allude to, you know, you get to, you surplus it.
Yeah.
Well, this time because we are having delays when a med unit goes out of service for our turbos. It may take us where normally we get it two or three days. Our vendor can get it put on two or three days, we're back in service. It could be a month. So we're trying to hold on to these trucks and get a little extra mileage out of them. The men and women are doing a great job. Fleet maintenance does a great job keeping the trucks on the road, keeping them safe and everything. It's just, we find ourselves in very, very difficult and different purchasing times right now.
Did we ever find anything else about the gasoline versus diesel?
So Hall County just recently got theirs. And so I have stayed in contact with their EMS guy over there to just kind of see. But I think it's too early for me to say. It is something that we're definitely looking at because DEF and diesels, I don't have to tell anybody that those are a diesel truck in DEF, you know, we do have some issues, you know, with that periodically.
Is that something if we did decide to do that later? We've already ordered these, is that something we could possibly change? Or is that, once these are in? Because I know they'll be ordering the chassis specifically for this.
If they haven't physically received the chassis.
Yeah.
We could potentially go back to the vendor and look at it if we're seeing that. And again, the, and I really asked the vendor, I said, look, I know it's very, very difficult for you to look in your crystal ball and say, how much is everything going to go up in two years? I said, give me good estimates. And it's easier for us that two years from now, they say, well, you know what? You came in at 840. And you're not going to need another 43,000. So you get that back, we're not going to have to use 43,000. We save a little, but you know, when you look at the medical supplies, cardiac monitors are going up. A cardiac monitor now is $55,000, $60,000. Just for a heart monitor. And that's probably one of the more key, key assets that we have on the med units. And it's just, you know, it's a very expensive item.
Have to have.
And you said we don't, we don't pay for these until it's finalized. Let's order a bunch of them, sell them.
That's a topic for another, and I can get an agenda fresh real quick.
I noticed in here.
Chris is going to be mad at me.
I noticed in here where you had, it said an option, I guess, for two-wheel or four-wheel drive. I guess we're getting four-wheel, right?
Sticking with the four-wheel, yes, sir, that is correct.
For this.
And also the on-spot chains. And I think if you, Mr. Chairman, if you look in there, you'll see there's the basic equipment that comes with it. And then there is a Dawson County.
Yeah, I read all that. And I think that's where it said the option, but I was pretty sure you'd probably stay with four-wheel.
Yes, sir.
We got to have that in this area.
One of the other things that we've added also is a 15,000 pound front bumper, which we find ourselves sliding from time to time.
Go off-road, do you?
Got George red clay.
Off-road is on the road sometimes.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief Thompson? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of Elliott Road realignment and widening, Public Works Director Denise Far. Denise?
Afternoon Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Public Works Department has received the widening and realignment plans from Davis Engineering, and those should be a part of your agenda packet. For a quick review. We. Can y'all read that? I'm not sure I can see that here. Can you see that? Good. A quick review of Elliott Road is a county maintained road. It originates at State Route 53 East and terminates at Sunset Drive with approximately 0.95 miles in length. The road is bordered by 35 parcels, both commercial and residential. Existing asphalt ranges between 12 and 23 feet in width. And the right of way along the road ranges between 12 feet to 24 feet in width. We have several site distance issues along the road, which is due to the poor alignment. Pros realignment, the plans that you have improved site distance along several portions of the road. It's referenced by the.
Yeah.
I think I talked before I clicked. It's referenced by the large X's along the road. And the widening provides a consistent 40 foot, 40 feet of width of right of way that can accommodate two 12-foot travel lanes. That's, that's a huge change in what they have out there now. The design improves, provides an improvement in alignment and increases travel lanes, which provides a safer means of travel for both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Property requirements for the project, of course, there's 35 parcels aligning the road. 19 of these will require to be donated. 16 will not be affected and will require a total of 44,240 square feet of property to be donated or acquired. And then 299 square feet of county property will be donated. The boat below list is the property, names of the property owners and their associated parcel numbers. The square footage out beside that, if it has a plus in front of it, that denotes that we are going to ask for donations. And the minus signs stipulate that the county is going to abandon that amount of property on that parcel. Questions on that slide? I know there's a lot of information on that one.
Got any feeling about you going to have problems with donation? I thought that's always been the problem out there.
There's, there's three or four parcels that are going to carry the bunt of the acquisition. Mr. Lee is a little over 12,000 square feet. He's the largest. I don't know him personally, but that's a lot of property. We have several, just have a couple hundred feet. He's the very last one at the hairpin turn. If you're going towards the lake, it's on the left. When we go back. Okay, so if you, if you look at the hairpin turn down here, right for Sunset Drive goes perpendicular. He's on the left-hand side there.
Okay, that triangle.
Yes.
Is there a house on that property?
I don't believe so. If there is, it's one way in the back and I don't know if it's a capital.
Have you spoken with him at all?
No, I mean, I have not. I haven't spoken with any of the owners.
You haven't?
If I might add to that, just to get some clarification on that. In the past, we've never really had an engineered drawing that would actually show the right of way in what we're doing. We've also minimized the right of way width. Typically, you'd have a 60-foot right of way or, you know, somewhere in there. So we've gone down to a 40-foot right of way. So in the defense of the property owners, they've never really been able to physically see what those impacts are going to be. So I think that's led to some of the hesitance to want to be able to provide that property. As you'll see in the sketches and all, in some cases, it's very minimal. And so what we plan on asking the board to do as well is to, once we get your guidance, is to be able to hold a public meeting at Station Two to invite all the property owners out there so they can physically see where the impacts are going to be on their property. And then that way we can kind of discuss, you know, what's going on. So hopefully that will minimize any more, you know, confusion or hesitance to want to assist in doing this.
My last live day, just on my thunder. That's exactly why I was going to ask for it, was for board approval to move forward with issuing the donation packets and requesting a public meeting at fire station number two, where we will have those plans that you have enlarged to 24 by 36 and on display there for them to look at that. So they can see the overall picture maybe a little better than just their particular part. And of course, the design was funded by SPO Six.
Questions for Denise?
Do we have an estimated cost? Did you?
Yes, sir, I do.
She hesitates.
I do hesitate. Material cost presently is $338,000. We have been notified that that will increase March 1st.
When?
March 1st for trucking it in, 675,000. Now, the road will have to be, all the asphalt will have to be removed because it's very fine and it's, it's, it's really deteriorating. And it's laid on red clay. There's no base. So we'd have to put anywhere from an eight to 12-inch GAB base. We could probably reduce that cost a little bit if we, we lowered the amount of base. But it's still going to be around $300,000 just for material costs.
And the six, so 605 is trucking something in, and then what is like the paving and everything?
Well, the base is 202,000 with trucking and materials. The binder is 288,000 trucking and materials. And the topping, which is the last part of a little bit of asphalt, is 185,000 trucking in asphalt.
Last part of the 670.
That's all.
You said trucking at the end.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, and that, that's not, that's us doing it. I don't know if we would be able to do all that, but that's us doing it. It doesn't include cost of equipment rental or employees or.
Yeah, there'll be some surprises.
Oh, yes ma'am, and that doesn't include strapping. That doesn't include tie-ins to the driveways, which we think of probably, every driveway will need a tie-in in a pipe. Once we build the road up, we're thinking 12. Probably, yes ma'am. That doesn't include drainage because we'll have to tilt the road so it'll drain. So we're thinking 12 to 1500 dollars per driveway.
I have to say that road is horrible.
It's, it is, this has some challenges to it.
I'd hate to have to drive that every day. When you meet somebody, I don't know where you go, you'd have to go in somebody's yard and people don't like that. I don't know what you do back up or.
You go in that hill.
And you said it's right under a mile in length total?
0.95 miles, yes, sir.
What is our normal road? If we do a full depth reclamation, it's not a million dollars.
It's about 650,000 a mile. But we couldn't do a full depth reclamation here because there's nothing to dig up to mix with the Portland cement. Plus, it's too narrow.
And that's one thing to keep in mind, too, is that there's nothing underneath the asphalt. So.
Well, that's good Georgia red clay.
Good Georgia red clay, that's true. But there's no base, no sub-base, no binder, no nothing. So you're basically starting from scratch.
Building a whole new road. And then that, that number you just gave, that is construction cost. That doesn't include any acquisition cost if that were needed, if nobody. So 15 to 2 million is probably realistic for a mile.
Other questions for Denise?
Since it is a county road, and this is, I guess, a legal question from a liability perspective. I know we talk about this all the time and the fact that, you know, sometimes you can't pave a gravel road because you have, I'll talk about, then you get faster speeds and stuff like that. If you let a road deteriorate over a period of time, is there additional layers of liability that the county assumes in a scenario like this? Well, it's like, it's like anything else, you have an infrastructure and you have to maintain it. And you've got priorities and you've got administrative staff persons who are tracking those things. And, and, you know, so long as you're addressing things appropriately and then in a reasonable order, that in and of itself would increase your liability.
And I know we have a grading system. Where does this fall in your grading system?
Rating.
Grading system.
Road grade.
Not grading, rating.
Well, we look at just things beside the deterioration of the road. We look at how it serves the public. How many people are on that road? We have a same issue over off of Lake Casbury, it needs an FDR. It's, it's, it's in pieces. And the majority of the county rides that road. So if I had to pick the same cost, or probably even less the cost, I would have to choose Lake Casbury. It serves more of the public.
This other one, he's been going on for such a long time. It's just been, I don't know what's kept him from losing their mind riding on that road. Because, I mean, it's just dangerous.
One of the really bad turns, the, the one there that has all the undeveloped land. I think that's Danny Bennett's property over there that's being developed. That will be removed, I think, the majority of it, when he develops that. Because he's going to have an emergency exit off that back part and he's going to donate, I think it's 15 feet wide right of way to the county. So some of that will be removed by him. Or by his contractor.
This isn't uncommon, you know, with some of the roads that we have, where just years ago, they just came in and just asphalted over top what was there. There was no engineering, there was no design work, there were no drainage systems put in place. And so we're kind of inheriting that, that type of system that needs to be brought up to a current standard. So that's why we're bearing more of the cost now and it's kind of a pay me now or pay me later type of situation. It's only going to get worse, it's not going to get any better.
And you know, we're spending all this money and like, you know, there will be surprises, but, you know, we won't, let's do it right. You know, because if you don't, to me, you're wasting this.
You are.
So we, and you know, when we inherited what we did, but we, we got to fix it at some point, so.
Well, it's some of these small roads, you got more delivery too. I think that's probably head over there is, you know, UPS or whoever's delivering and running off the edge of the road and creating more problems or running people off the road. That's just a change of time as everything's getting delivered.
Well, and it's also, these houses used to be probably vacation rental houses, which were used on the weekends and it wasn't everyday living. So now your demand level of that particular road has increased.
There is a boat rental place on that road as well, which has a great deal of large traffic on the road.
Other questions for Denise? Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have presentation from the ordinance amendment to provide a process for alternate architectural designs. Planning and Development Director Sharon Fair. Sharon.
I've heard a lot about the loss of a Cracker Barrel since I've come to work here. So I was presenting some language to you, test in the water, so to speak. And there's a clean copy in your back backup that basically provides an avenue if there was to be such a user that wanted to come in and at least ask, could they build this within the Georgia 400 corridor? They could come directly to you. There's some criteria, how does the alternate design meet the intent of the code? Whether there exists architectural, structural reasons why the existing requirement cannot be met. Historical or iconic value of the design and the effect upon adjoining properties. So it is, as an exhibit, it seems like fairly lengthy change, but it is pretty short and it, it follows the regular public hearing process without going to the planning commission.
Questions for Sharon?
What precipitated this? What, what made you?
Um, I've been, I've, since I've come to work here, there's been concerns expressed to me about that we may lose certain businesses that come to town and don't want to have the 80% brick and the 50-50% brick. That they may have something unique and you wouldn't want.
What about if it's unique and ugly?
Well, that's.
And really sticks out.
Well, you would deny it then. But it would give you the opportunity.
I deny that ice cream thing.
Well, that was, I haven't seen one of those in a long time.
Boy, it looks like bones on the boardwalk in Atlantic City.
Well, that one was near Daytona Beach.
Probably are.
Okay.
Well, if you remember, years ago, we lost the Cracker Barrel to that design. And unwillingness to grant a variance so that they would build here instead of in Forsyth. They wound up in Forsyth. And I think you can easily say that that was a $500,000 a year mistake. Or more, because the Cracker Barrel is a destination location versus some other place that you might just go to eat. So, I mean, this is an option that the board still has the final say on. But this will give companies like the Cracker Barrel, if we ever lucky enough to get them to want to come back, which I know Chris worked on that for a while, trying to get them to come back here. Don't think we got anywhere at that particular time, but hopefully at some point in time, we might get something or some other place that, you know. They did come back eventually, like Chili's, you know, lost them originally over.
The pepper.
The fight over a pepper size, so.
Pepper on the side of the building.
On the side of the building, so, yeah. So a lot of this is trademark stuff and they just do one way. And so either you help them or you don't get it. So, so I think it's something that the board can take a look at and decide if that's something they want to do. And like, so you still have options to approve or deny.
I think the, the biggest thing is just to have an option because with the, the overlay type ordinance, it's just hard to anticipate every situation that might come. And it's, it, there needs to be a, a way to say that if there's something unique that we can say, oh, we might like that or, or know that we wouldn't have to do it.
I don't believe I'd ever like that ice cream. I don't care what they put on it. The diner looks like the bug head down there.
Sprinkles on top of it.
Now, when they sprinkle that up a bit.
She's giving you some potential options. It could be.
I mean, I don't have, I never have had any trouble about what Cracker Barrel looks like. I always thought that that was over size.
No.
The size of her size.
It was over the building side. The side of the building.
See, there's nothing wrong with the way that building looks and just because of the way their ordinance was, we didn't, we didn't have any mechanisms. They didn't want to grant a variance for us to take a look at it. So I think it would be good just to be.
And that's how simple it would have been.
Yeah.
A variance.
Really?
Yeah. Well, he said that, I was, I was in that meeting, the gentleman said he, they built one Cracker Barrel that didn't look like a Cracker Barrel in Arizona. He said, nobody knows this there. They don't, they don't recognize it. Their sign, they had something to do with their signs, the height of, they had a monument, low sign, but the exterior was rock and, and stucco and when they're green color or whatever, and they said, nobody goes there.
Structure.
Nobody knows this there. They said they won't do it again.
Yeah. Other questions for Sharon? Thank you, ma'am. County Manager Report, Dave.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon Commissioners. Dawson County recently was approved for $35,058.36 in a public assistance related to COVID-19 emergency protective measures. And this is federal money that we got for that. So just wanted to update you on that.
How much did you say? I was still about to get the ice cream store. What, how much did you say you got?
Oh, $35,058.36.
Lots of strains attached, I'm sure.
Second item that I had on here was that the Good Shepherd Clinic is offered to be a collection site for donations of camping tents, sleeping bags, blankets, hoods, hats, scarves, gloves and socks for those in need. The items will be distributed to those in need in Dawson County. The donations will be accepted from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through Tuesday, February the 15th, at the Good Shepherd Clinic located at 45 Medical Center Drive, which is behind the Burger King on 53 and 400.
When did it start? When did collections start?
I'm not real sure when they started. Did you?
When did collections start?
Was it Tuesday? Okay. And there you go, yeah. So through Tuesday of February the 15th, so they're going through, yeah. Human Resources received a, and logged 165 employee evaluations for 2021. Merit increases also. Merit increases also were applied. The sheriff's office nor planning is included in this total, but is expected to be added by the next pay period. Um, provided you all a uh, uh, drawing of the um, different ratings and where we are from a staff level standpoint. Uh, as you can see, uh, and what the board approved uh, recently when we redid the um. Policy is that PTO hours could be awarded as a merit uh, reward for different scores. So this gives you an idea based on the hundred and sixty-five that participated in there, uh, as to where they fell in there and what the average is and where we are. And what this does is it gives us performance measure in which. For example, thirty-seven percent, uh, and, and this numbers may fluctuate once we get those other ones in, and then we'll get a truer picture of where they are. But what it does is it shows that sixty-one percent of those folks fall within the three to three point nine percent. And then the other thirty-seven percent fall within the four point oh up. So what our, our goal will be is to what we, what measures we can take in order to improve that, to bring those up. To uh, you know, uh, a, a better performance level. So I just wanted to give you a picture of what that looks like. And then answer any questions you may have on that. Also, uh, the ones that did not participate in that, uh, you can see a list of those as well. So. We'll have those numbers um, in the next couple of weeks. Uh, IT uh, will be rolling out a new work order system next week that will allow county employees. To be able to track the progress of the tickets they submit and enable them to interact directly with IT. Currently you submit a work order and then you wait to see what happens. This way they incorporated a process to where the employee can now follow and track where their work order is. So IT also is rolling out a new remote support option so that IT staff can access workstations remotely to more quickly complete work requests. So this will be going into effect shortly. Uh, we also uh, are celebrating our fifty years of park and recreation in Dawson County this year. At our annual opening day event scheduled for Saturday, March the nineteenth. Normally, our opening day event consists of team pictures, exhibition games, concessions, Chick-fil-A lunch, sales, vendors and free children's activities. We will have all of that this year, but to celebrate the big anniversary, we are adding an opening ceremony where we'll have someone sing the national anthem. Briefly speak on the park's history, introduce former park directors, which the chairman will be a part of. And have someone throw a first pitch to jumpstart the day. We'll also have music and commemorative T-shirt sales. We're doing pre-orders for the shirts through February the twenty-fifth, but we'll have a few on hand on event day to sell for fifteen dollars each. Our day will start as early as seven-thirty AM with team pictures. Opening ceremony will be at ten AM. The vendors and, and free children's activities will start at ten-thirty AM and exhibition ball games will start at noon. Depending on how many teams we have this year, the games could last until the late afternoon or early evening. And currently we have twelve vendors that will be selling or giving away many goodies, anything from cotton candy to boiled peanuts to providing bounce uh. Bounce houses for the event and we're excited uh, for the big day and look forward to celebrating such a milestone year in Dawson County. And I believe Matt can speak further on anything that I might have missed. So that concludes my report and.
Is there a rain date?
Uh, it would be the following Saturday, but those are hard to call.
Okay. It could be snow, as crazy as our weather is.
Questions of the county manager? County attorney report?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman. Oh, what an executive session after the work, the voting session or an executive session?
After, after the voting session, yeah.
Yeah, there will be a, an ex, executive session for real estate.
Okay.
All right. That's it.
Questions of the county attorney? All right, with that, we'll take about, let's see, about ten minutes. We'll be back uh, for our voting session.